Turn that terrible music down.
Turn the elevator around or something?
Something, where it's all of that somewhat generation. I don't see the green light on. Denise, if the light isn't on, we can get started.
I have the green light.
You have the green light? And we're live Denise.
Barely, but...
No, we're live. Like, we're live, straight live.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for nobody taking a knee, I appreciate it.
Alright, we're not gonna start off on that.
Nice haircut, Tim.
What's that?
Why do you say, why do you look at me like that?
Because I didn't even get a lollipop to this haircut. We are live, folks. Alright, so, um, we're going to move this, change this around a little bit. We're going to have Victoria Berger come on up. Victoria, she's from the Suffolk County Historical Society. She's the new executive director. I don't know if that's your exact title, but that's what the title we're gonna give you today. And you have a new Riverhead 225th Anniversary Exhibit that you're gonna talk about, and, um, the floor is yours.
Okay. Yes, hi, my name is Victoria Berger. I am the Executive Director of the Suffolk County Historical Society Museum. On behalf of the museum, we want to welcome and invite the entire community to our Riverhead 225th Anniversary Exhibition. The opening reception is this Saturday, October 14th at 1:00 PM, and it is free and open to the public, so we invite everyone from the community to come out and help celebrate with us. Excuse me. We're located at 300 West Main Street, Riverhead, and the exhibit's gonna run through December 22nd, but the real celebration is this Saturday at 1:00 PM. This exhibition illustrates the early development of Riverhead, particularly celebrating its independence from Southold in 1792.
Pretty soon when we conquer South, we're gonna conquer Southmore then.
Rain on your parade.
They don't want our mindset out there, believe me.
Declared the seat of the County of Suffolk in 1727, Riverhead has always held a strong presence at the head of the forks, and Riverhead residents have always felt a strong independence and pride in their history. So this exhibition celebrates all of that. The exhibition covers the history of all the town supervisors that have served the community.
Lord have mercy.
Covers the early founding government. There's a wonderful section that covers the development of Grangeable Park, the beautiful private parklands that were created by the Judge Timothy Griffin in 1884, and was donated as a gift to the people of Riverhead.
Do you know why it's called Grangeable Park?
It's his three daughters' names melded together.
Very good, of course she knows.
Everybody knows that, Sean.
I didn't know that when I first came.
You're not a local.
That's right.
This exhibit also covers very heavily and celebrates the agricultural industry here in Riverhead, celebrating 300 years of being the center of Long Island's agricultural industry. Long Island has 35,000 acres of farmland, 20,000 of which are located right here in Riverhead, so we really are the hub of the industry. From cranberries to potatoes, cauliflower to duck farming, Riverhead is incomparable in its rich farming history, and so we're celebrating that through the exhibit. The exhibit also explores...
You like cranberries?
Love cranberry.
Juice and vodka.
Mixed, with a lime.
With a lime. I just was leading into that. This is his children's show, so I probably shouldn't.
It's a family-friendly environment I'm supporting here. The exhibit explores the great Riverhead fairgrounds, where all of Long Island came together to celebrate and enjoy the annual Suffolk County Fair for over 100 years. We will also be covering the school district development in the exhibition. We have class photos that date back to the turn of the century, so someone might recognize a great-grandparent.
Or John Dunleavy.
Right?
Lighten up. I was gonna say, you two are the only, like, founding. I'm in Wading River, so I'm accepted because I only moved to Wading River.
Yeah, right. You're presupposing you're accepted.
I'll let you know November 7th.
The exhibition is also highlighting all of the beautiful, beautiful historic landmarks that are located throughout the entire township. We have not only photographs, postcards, but actual paintings and renderings of all of the beautiful historic structures.
And we're not taking down any statues or shipping them to Oyster Bay or anything like that. We'll keep our statues. Do we have any?
We also have, throughout the exhibit, it's beautifully accented with artifacts from our, within our own society's collection, so there's opportunities to see actual examples of a turn-of-the-century Riverhead High School football uniform. We have the original lock to the county jail that will be on exhibit. We have lots of commemorative Riverhead souvenirs from all the various events that have been held throughout the years.
You have any reelection Walter bumper stickers? Do you have stuff like that, like memorabilia from politicians?
We do. We have all kinds of memorabilia from, yeah, we have bumper stickers and all kinds of fun stuff. Just to tell you a little bit about the museum, for anyone who's not familiar or hasn't been there, that, that's us on that bulletin board. Everyone recognizes the building, but we hear it all the time that people don't realize that it's a museum.
Not ordinarily.
Right, and that it's open to the public, and it's a great, great, family-sized museum. Great, perfect museum to bring the kids. We were founded in 1886. We've been collecting artifacts and archives ever since. Our collection predates civil town and county record-keeping methods, so we are an incredible resource for historic research. And our museum houses over 16,000 square feet of artifacts and exhibits, all focused on local history. As I said, it's a great, family-friendly facility to come and bring the kids and have fun learning local history. So again, I am Vicky Berger, inviting the entire community to our free opening reception this Saturday, October 14th at 1:00 PM.
The press, do you have that?
We've been contacting them. Press releases have gone out to everyone.
I'm looking forward to coming. The only thing is there is a, is a parade. There is a homecoming parade down Main Street at 11:30, I believe, or 12 o'clock.
11:30. Yeah, I may stop in after that, but I have to do the parade.
Okay, well, we'll be there all day.
Maybe I'll just walk the pass and just take a left turn right into a store.
And the exhibit will be until, you said?
The exhibit runs until December 22nd.
December 22nd, okay, perfect.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you very much. There's cards here for the press. If anybody wants them, and we'll leave the rest in the kiosk up front so that people can see them, and...
It will make this part of our history.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it, thank you.
Nice meeting you, congratulations.
Thanks for meeting you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now on to some more mundane stuff. Parking. Larry, I think we got a little feedback here, so... What's that? Oh, oh, thank you. Parking, come on up guys.
Mike and Howard, come on up. Gentlemen, this is Howard Lilly.
How you doing?
Mike Phelan. Mike Phelan?
I can even stand up.
Yeah, you got...
This table keeps coming back and back.
Table bolted to the ground.
Is it really?
This one is. It's just that one is, but it's, it hasn't moved.
It's the chair.
I've got it.
I love the card. Do I go carry mine anymore?
You know what, we'll take the extra though. Councilman Dunleavy's not here today, so we'll give it to him.
Oh, look at that. I like that.
Alright. Tim, what are we here for?
Okay, we are interested in traffic enforcement and parking enforcement in particular to, A, raise some revenue, to B, cure up some of the violators that are happening downtown. As you know, we have, like, Main Street, as Mr. Gannon incorrectly put in the paper last week, we have time limits on all our parking stalls downtown. They're two hours. Your article said there are none, except for the 15-minute ones we're trying to propose, and that's incorrect. Every parking stall is a two-hour limit on East Main Street and West Main Street.
The news review was incorrect on Sunday?
I was shocked. I was extremely shocked. I think I should write an op-ed.
But that's on Main Street, right, Tim?
On Main Street, on Main Street, but we were talking about making some 15-minute parking slots. These gentlemen represent a company that put out a product that will enable our enforcement officers to write a ticket of a parking violator in a very quick timeframe, which is very beneficial for a couple reasons. It increases your ticket productivity. And again, we don't want to be known as the ticket-writing capital of Eastern Long Island town, but we have to, we do have to enforce what we have. One of the main things I like about this, being a retired cop, and Jim will certainly understand this, is this because of the, how fast the system works, it gives the officer a chance to write the ticket, put it under the windshield, and move on. Alleviating the confrontation, which so often doesn't work out well. You know, nobody likes to get a ticket, we understand that, but unfortunately, there are some crazy people out there, and it's for the safety of the officer. It allows him to have less confrontations with the vehicle owner. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys to give a synopsis of what you do and what your products are.
And again, thank you for letting us come up and speak to you today. My name is Mike Phelan. I'm the commercial GM for our eastern region.
What's that?
Where did you park today?
We parked out front here. No sign anywhere, so I wanted to make sure that we were good to go.
Just because there's no sign doesn't mean you're not by the way.
That's true, that's true. I'll wait and see if I get anything on my windshield, how is windshield when we get outside. But no, we are a Maryland-based company. Opto Traffic is our mother company, if you want to call it that. We run a number of automated speed and red light enforcement programs. That's how we got our start, based off of some NASA. Our mother company is a NASA company as well, so our...
Are you the guys that do the radar trap going on 95 South just before the DC?
Why do they get you?
Traffic control, speed, tickets.
Now, I'm on Long Island myself. My office is on Long Island. I have nothing to do with that.
No, but that, the construction zone in Maryland, that is not us. That is another company. But, just giving you a little background, so during all...
Is that what they call it, construction zone?
Yeah, it's a construction zone, yeah.
Where they flash the ticket picture and send you a ticket in the mail? I didn't get one, but I know other Riverhead residents.
There is a big sign. It says "traffic enforcement."
Photo enforcement, yeah. So, so we kind of took our all-encompassing back office that we do where citation processing, customer service, court scheduling, payment processing, collections, that we do for speed and red light, and kind of, how can we change the way the parking industry was, has been done? Because right now, there are numerous agencies that have apps and enforcement tools out there, but they also partner with this company, they partner with another company, and next thing you know, you're in with three or four different people to have the same thing. So we offer all of that. We developed our parking app in-house. We have our own programmer, so it can be customized and changed, and things can be added almost instantaneously. So if there's a parking violation that needs to be updated or a fine value that needs to be changed, all we do is update the system, so when the officer logs in, the next time it updates the app right away. There's no coming back to dock the device. There's no syncing it. There's no tech support where the device needs to be updated. We have to have it brought offline, so you can't write tickets. So with the way the app is designed, we take photos of the license plate and of the violation of the scene, so it could be multiple things that are on there. There's a scan function on the phone, so that way they can scan the registration sticker on the front of the vehicle and puts all the vehicle information into the app itself. GPS location, so they just hit the GPS button, already puts in their GPS location based off the phone. Can be changed, so if it is, like, if there's an odd and even side of the roadway, they, sometimes the phone might pick up an odd side when they're on the even or vice versa. They can update that as well. Once all that is said and done, they select their violations, all drop down menu. What prints out, they won't see any fine values on the app itself, but when they hit print, all that data is saved into our back office, so when that violation is selected, it knows which fields to put on the ticket itself. They print the ticket off, put it on the windshield of the vehicle.
Oh, the printer, Mike?
So the, we use the Zebra printers. It's a Bluetooth printer. It's got thermal paper in it.
Zebra, we have a Zebra here on Long Island. Is that the same Zebra technology company that's on...
I'm not sure. I don't, I'm not sure when...
They bought the old...
Community Associates?
And, yeah, it used to be Computer Associates, and it went to Motorola and now Zebra. I'm not sure it says Zebra on there.
Yeah, I'll have to look into it. I'm not sure where Zebra is out of. We outsource to, or we just find wherever we can to buy the printers that cost. But, so you get thermal paper, so it can't be ripped, it can't fade, it can be in the weather. You don't need to have a special envelope and then to put it in. We work with you to design the pre-printed portion of the citation, which would be all the legal verbiage on the back of the ticket, payment instructions. If they don't pay, what happens with late fees or court fees, or how to request court. Anything that we need to work with you and the courts to make sure it follows the letter of the law. Once that's done, we order the rolls, and we give you guys 100 rolls, and we just keep the rolls coming in as you need, as you write the tickets. Once the ticket is printed, like I said, they put it on the vehicle, either they give it to the, however they want to give it to the violator, it's directly handing it to them, or they stick it on the car, take a picture of that. And when the officer hits finish, the very bottom of this ticket, or the app, once they hit finish, all that data is uploaded to our servers. So now that ticket is in the system. Doesn't need to be logged by anybody else. It doesn't need to be synced by the officer when they come back to the station. The violator can log in and actually pay their ticket within a number of minutes from getting that ticket. They can view their photos that they just, that the officer just took. They can request court. They can, you know, then they can, if they need to have a question about anything, it can all be tracked. There's no waiting for any type of data input to happen.
So the thermal paper, that's the old fax paper? So you just, you don't have a stick, you don't have an envelope, you just put that on the windshield? What's that look like in the rain? I mean, I guess everybody does it, but it's...
I mean, even the paper, as a former police officer, those envelopes you get really don't protect the item.
No, they're not protected either, yeah.
It'll hold up for a little.
Yep. So the beauty of having it uploaded right away is that, so that way that violator can see. We have this, you know, we have several clients in Maryland that are using this parking system, and, you know, their payment rates are a lot higher because that violator can pay right away. There's, you know, some of their fine values double and triple within a matter of days of getting a parking ticket down there. So a lot of those violators, they want to pay right away, rather than have to waiting, you know, the next day or a couple days after because they need to wait, or if it's on a weekend, those violators can log in and they can see their photos. So a lot of times we've seen now that violators can see the pictures that would come to court. If they requested court, the court requests have gone down and payment rates have gone up.
I think the pictures are the biggest thing, is that all of a sudden...
Picture paints a thousand words here.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, but now, you know, handwriting a ticket, you know, prove to me that my car was parked there other than this piece of paper you gave me. Well, now, the officer shows up in court and here's seven photos plus the ticket, you know, are you holding the ticket?
I think the timestamp is probably the most important thing in Riverhead. That's good.
And to be honest, all equipment's free, all training's free, that's on us.
Now, this is all parking. We can, the fire zone's up in 58, handicap zone 58.
We can customize it. We can build the app to your...
Yeah, and free is what I like.
It's not all free. How do you get paid?
Well, and like, and like, how, and like how we mentioned, yeah, we do upfront costs for the phone, the printer. The way we do our speed and red light camera systems now across the states is the same way we do parking. There's no upfront costs to the agency at all. Our business model is based on violator-funded, so we want to make sure that the people who you write tickets to are the ones who fund your ability to use this program.
That's the difference between the company we're using now, because I asked that same question, and he said, "Well, we charge you for those."
Yeah.
This is like I told you, when your father tells you, "Don't get that."
Is it FMS?
We will. It's three letters. I know that's FMS sometimes.
But we ask the same question. Why don't you just provide all this stuff to us for free? And they're like, "Well, you know, we really can't."
Yep. So we have a very good working relationship with Verizon. So we have the ability to add multiple lines, phones, all that stuff, which is why we just go in and just give you guys the device itself.
So really, you're just, the officer, the TCO gets a cellphone, which we, some of them have anyway, town cellphones, and the printer.
Yes.
And that's it.
All a cellphone is, is just for the parking. It's not a cellphone.
Yeah, so what we've done is we...
Just scanner, I think.
Yeah, we have taken the ability, I mean, it is, we just had disabled the calling functions of the phone and be able to do anything else other than just access...
There is another one button on there.
Just access our app.
There is, if they're in trouble, at the very top. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, it's not a phone, it's a device that comes with the printer, and then we would give it to our officer if they write the ticket.
It's limited to that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it is the phone itself, but, you know, you're right.
It's programmed just to use it.
It is for just, it's using cellular data to transfer all the information back to our servers. We would give you guys access to the program. All the administrators would have it. It's web-based, so there's no...
Who would administer, be the administrator from our end? Police station? Court? Who?
Usually the traffic boss. Usually it'd be the traffic sergeant. I don't know how big the department is. But for us, I mean, in the city, this would go to whoever, lieutenant in traffic, in the traffic division.
Well, I guess it would go there.
It'd be whoever you wanted, to be quite honest.
If they decided not to pay the ticket and to come to court, then it should probably go to whoever's scheduling the court dates.
Justice court.
That's however we do it now.
What do you normally do now? Is exactly how we just...
Right, exactly. The company we have now, which isn't FMS, it's something else, but whatever. Really, we write the tickets and they do the collections of the tickets. And if you don't pay within a certain amount of time, the ticket increases, and they just take care of the collections, and eventually you wind up going to a collection agency. So you would do that as well?
We, yes, we would. So we would...
What's the cost? What's the percentage you take on a ticket?
That, that, it depends on...
Roughly, you don't have to, because...
Well, this may go out for an RFP, so I'd ask them not to say specifically.
And I will tell you, we have two different business models that are out there. We have percentage-based, and we also have a administrative fee. So depending on, or a flat fee. So depending on the violation amount, depending on the number of tickets, you know, really, depending on how the jurisdiction wants it to be run, we can tailor our contract.
We'll let you decide it.
To kind of go, okay...
A flat processing fee per ticket.
Yeah, versus a percentage, you know, and that also comes out of, you know, the violation number. You know, of course, how many, you know, when the violations, either late fees come into occurring, or, you know, depending on how the fine values increase, or throughout the life of the ticket, also plays into how that percentage or that payment model could or could not be, so...
With this, we probably do have to do an RFP, because we have another company, which at the time was the only company that did what we did, and we just had them forever and ever and ever. Well, not forever, but 15 years. So I think, hey Bob, can you have Eric start to work on an RFP for this? Since he's our traffic guy? Our, he's our deputy town attorney that does code and traffic violations.
Okay.
Parking violations.
How many hats does he wear here?
Everybody does everything.
Everybody off the test.
We only have court a few days a week.
So, I mean, I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. I think, I like the fact about that it's less confrontational for the officer.
And free.
And if you ever go on 58, I mean, I'm chasing people all the time. They all look at me like, you know. Were you a fireman or something? They park in front of Best Buy, they park in front of TJ Maxx, you know, getting out the way.
It's gonna help with our enforcement, because quite honestly, we can put all the 15-minute, two-hour parking zones in one. If we're not enforcing it, it doesn't do any good. And this is gonna allow us to get the most out of our personnel as far as enforcement.
And every officer, there's, it's not a specific login, so you can grab any device and log in. So I could grab one, and then you could grab another one and switch them throughout, so there's no need to have a specific issue devices to each officer. Right now, I have an agency that has about 35 total police officers, and they have seven devices, and they just check them out as they need to, and that's what those officers use for parking enforcement.
TCOs and local security.
So...
Dattow, Goff, 640s, yeah.
So how do you, I'm sorry. So, like our police officers, years ago, Councilman Dunleavy and I were talking to the chief saying, "So, we, what if we mark the tires on Main Street?" Because you gotta keep track of the 15 minutes or the two hours, and, you know, is there anything in this device that will help with that, where you can scan it and not issue the ticket, but it gives you a time that you scanned it, that the car got there, and then...
You can scan and give it a warning, but then that, you kind of have to go through the whole process, which is...
Because someone could say, "Hey, it wasn't that two hours."
And you could, you could go through, mark the tire, take pictures of the chalk mark, issue it as a warning.
Okay, so it'll, it'll track the time that the picture was taken of the tire?
What the officer can do is, once they print that warning out, they have a way to go back to their history, so they can look, they can go back and go, "Okay, so I wrote," you know, it would be, there'd be the history... So they can look, they can go back and go, "Okay, so I wrote," you know, it would be, there'd be the history on there, so I wrote the warning at this date and this time. When they go back to that car and it's still there, they can look, they, they can look and then take it, and then now issue again of, of violation for it. And then they'll have that warning and a violation at the same time.
Is there a way for you to program it so it's not a, a written warning, so we could just, as the officer walks up?
Time stamps, I think.
Yeah, timestamps it, you take a picture, the officer has.
I'm sure, I'm, yeah, I'm sure there is.
They can absolutely design something.
I don't wanna chalk, chalk and tires.
No, chalk and tires is not a good idea, no, correct.
Plus, chief said that they would have to do extensive training in order to.
Extensive training?
Yes.
The chalk and tire?
Yeah.
Boy.
Definitely someone to look into, absolutely, again, what's gonna happen is it's a little, not long, I'm taking a couple of days to design the app according to what you want.
If you're currently working or, or doing something with West Hampton, I believe you said?
We are, we are, right now, actually, Long Beach and Garden City are basically the same thing, they're gonna ready to, we actually have a pilot program set up for Long Beach right now. Garden City's about to sign, we're heading out to South Old right now.
And, and, Robert, good point that, you know, if we'd like, we can send you guys a device and a printer and have it, you know, get some of your, your town codes now and you guys can use it. Um, issue warnings with it, go through pilot program, kinda have a demo phase where you can get used to logging in, um, between myself or how we can come out and train you guys, you know, train whoever wants to do it, the chief or whoever. They can use the device for a month or whatever and, and kinda go through and then kinda see how it works and, um, we, we do that all the time with our clients in Maryland, so if that's something you guys are interested in, we can, we can definitely set that up.
The company here right now do not, they do not do photos, correct?
Uh, no, we don't have any.
Yeah, I say, I think for me personally, as a cop, they're more of a collection agent. You have these photos?
They're a collection agent.
Yeah, they're a collection agent.
People will suddenly.
No, they do, do, they do have these programs, cause he did talk to us, but they were charging.
Right.
Sell it to us or lease it to us.
But which is why we really are gonna have to go to.
Are you the only one doing this, stores? As far as this?
No.
Long Island, there's nobody else on Long Island.
Yeah.
Hanplus has something different, but nothing with photos, nobody even photos.
Yeah.
Soul source, whether the Howard's.
Howard's based out of San Antonio, he's local. There's, the other company does this, they offered it to us, so you.
And I, I was gonna mention soul sourcing, but yeah, but you guys, uh.
I think it's.
Determine.
Wait to see what the results of the RFP.
And then the other thing is that I think we would probably put in the RFP that we would wanna design in the, a computer design or computer program that allows us to take a picture to timestamp it so the officer could go back. And that, I mean, that's really critical too, because with that, if you're doing two hour parking, you still have the problem, well, how did the officer know that the guy was there two hours? And if you've got a timestamp and then you've got, then that's it, you're done. Just cause you have a picture, now you're gonna rely on the testimony, well, who got, I mean, in theory, you're not gonna have a problem with the officer testifying, but if you timestamp it and then you have the picture, uh, two hours and five minutes later where you writ, wrote the ticket, that's it.
Right.
It's done.
And, and with that warning, rather than, you know, printing off a warning, it may be something where they select, when they select a violation, it saves the warning inches into the floor.
Right, it's a violation.
It issues it, so, so, yeah, so we, we, you know, you and we and everybody gets to have that warning so they can look at it later administratively. But then the officer, all I guess to do is just go back in and go, "Okay, I wrote a warning at, you know, twelve forty and then at three o'clock in the afternoon, that car is still parked there, it's way past the two hour timer, but now I can issue it and they can just go back in and issue that violation, um, as a live violation." So that is definitely something that we can do.
And you could program it with, with white plate so that it ignores it?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
How many something do you think you're out on a year, per year?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask too.
I don't, I really don't know anymore.
Be honest with you, we have, uh, our police force is like eighty-five members.
Okay.
We haven't really started enforcing, I mean, we just started enforcing the parking and the times and things of that nature because we had to get the curbs painted, we had to get the signs put up, we had to.
Downtown, but you're talking about downtown, we have always enforced in the commercial.
Fire zones, handicap zones.
We ride to Tanger and the chopping centers. Several hundred tickets.
Okay.
Yeah, we have traffic control officers, if that's all they do.
Okay.
They go around to the different, uh.
Do you deal with the wineries at all, with all this whole, it's crowded out here.
Really enforce, we don't really enforce the parking, because most of that is not.
Very crowded. It's not town?
Town, it's, yeah, they're not commercial, they're not set up like commercial establishments, most of them handicap and things like that.
But we are putting no parking areas adjacent to these wineries so that people are not running across the street and parking across the street, so we're putting up more, no parking signs.
I was on last week, it was in the. I'm close to it, I'll come out that, I do come out, it was unbelievable.
Well, you're the guy.
We don't.
He would, he would be that guy.
We don't, Howard, we stay, we lock our doors and stay at home on weekends.
Yes, we do, and drink cranberry juice.
We've got Monday through Friday to use Tanger and to visit the wineries and everything else.
After that.
We'll let the, uh, city slickers come out and do it on the weekends.
And, and you guys, if you have my information, so if you have any questions.
What we'll do is, we'll write the RFP, cause we need to start getting moving on this, we'll write the RFP, Bob, have Eric put the number, estimated number of tickets in the RFP that we issue a year, so they have some sort of.
Everybody's been soul sourcing us.
Per month, per year, it doesn't matter. Uh, so you know the estimate, estimated number of tickets, so you'll have some idea.
Okay.
And we also have to fix the, I think we're at, what, fifty dollars or thirty-five dollars?
Well, that's what's out of good one night. A lot of, what they're doing is they're still, they're placing, I mean, absolutely, absolutely about beyond this, but they up their processing, so they're still getting their ticket money and then the processing fee is going to that company, but they went, and he's.
They're well not doing that. We had, we had very expensive tickets, we knocked them down to fifty dollars.
Well, there's some I want to be expensive, I want them handicap, not be expensive, I, I don't care.
Oh, absolutely.
We found out that having like a hundred dollar simple parking ticket, people weren't paying them.
Yeah.
And then you were chasing them all over and half of them you could never catch up with.
Yeah, right.
Where if you cut it back, you're gonna have more people say, "All right, forty dollars, I'll pay it," you know? And I'll go back to that place for dinner again, a hundred dollar ticket, they're like, "I'm not going back to that town," it's, you know, they're killing me.
What, what are the late fees, like, is there a ti- what's the timeframe for when late fees kick in?
I think it's thirty days, thirty days, I think it's thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yeah. I was looking into going after the registration, when they go to re- re-register a vehicle, they have to take care of that songs.
But we'll have that home.
Yep.
You could kinda tag it to the, tag it to the registration.
Like Scott Ward. I don't think we've done that, I don't think we've done that, we do strictly, it's a collection.
You'll get paid there.
Yeah.
But let's, we'll put our stats in, we'll put our payment fees in, and then that way you have everything you need for the RFP.
Okay.
Really appreciate it. Great, thank you so much for your time.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you so much, thanks for making the trip up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, have a great day.
Get that ticket in that speed trap in Maryland.
You got my number now, so give me a ring if you come.
We'll subscribe you.
All right, um, let's talk about, uh, the next thing, what's the next thing, I think that's also. Murfree Kazakhovich, but this is really Tim and the parking. And Jeff, are you coming up too? The two Jeffs, and Bob?
Downtown Development.
Okay.
Jeff, Jeff and Bob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
He's Jeff, he's him, Jeff.
Okay, I see how this goes.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
Do you wanna introduce this or?
I give, this is basically, uh, we've talked about a few months ago, um, the pilot program and somehow trying to extract some money for the parking district from, uh, predominantly development, but residential, I think, is what we're looking at, uh, the residential development coming in downtown. That, yes, by law, they don't have to provide parking, but unfortunately, they really do have to provide parking because we're gonna run out of parking spaces if all these developments come to fruition.
Well, as soon as the gala one's done, then we'll have.
Yes, so this is, uh, we talked about different fees and, and attaching it to the development or to the developers as they come into town to build projects, that they would be responsible for providing, uh, monies to the parking district, payment in lieu of parking because they couldn't provide enough parking on their property. So that's kinda where we're at, I have looked at different, uh, scenarios, different programs out in California and different areas that have put together programs very similar to this. And they're as different in each place as they are, as, as many places that there are that they, they're in. So you kinda have to tailor it to be something that's specific for your need. A lot of them are bigger cities that have done this, so it's, it's a little different than what we're trying to do here. But really what you need to do is you need to put a price tag on it that doesn't kill the developer, but also allows you to bring some money into the parking district. And originally I was talking about fifteen hundred dollars a parking space with a cap of about seventy-five thousand dollars.
Are we gonna make Eric do this too, cause he should sit up here if he's gonna have to do this?
Sure.
Eric, we gave you a bunch of other stuff to do. You have to write an RFP.
So, there, there's a balance between what you can extract from a developer and what you actually need to make a dent in your parking district. Whether it be purchasing extra property to blacktop and put parking spaces in, whether you're trying to raise funds to go towards a, a parking garage. So that's kinda where we're at, I think, and then these gentlemen have come up with some information also, I think, that may add to that or.
Where a simple approach to get started.
My, my only concern is that you, you, I, I don't know how Riverhead is, but it's unique this with this parking district and this, um, you know, having the fact that you're in the parking district, you get the hundred percent footprint and you get, how does that parlay against what we're trying to do now? I mean, do we have to rewrite that whole parking district?
Well, I think there's a simple solution, simple solution to get started.
What we've kind of discussed amongst ourselves is that we take a shot at, uh, supplement their use regulations, and in particular the off-street parking section, which is three oh one, two thirty-one. That one, uh, subsection I, I think it is, currently says that, um, in the important language is where a parking district has been created, the owner of property within such district need not provide off-street parking areas required by this chapter.
Let's throw that out.
So that, that section, regardless of anything else we do here, is obviously gonna need to be revised or tailored to fit the situation.
So you could amend that, we could go to public hearing and amend that to limit it for commercial establishments, but not make it applicable to apartments, cause your apartments.
You could add, you could add in and that residential will be required for a pilot program.
Right, both Jeff and I took a stab at it, we sorta came around to the same thing, our verbiage is a little bit different, but that's what we, uh, had put together as far as addressing that, then I know you also have the question where an applicant can't meet the current parking schedule, what's the fee? Our, our code already provides for, uh, a section which is in the boards, commissions, uh, part of the code, and that's, uh, chapter one oh five, and in particular it's one oh five dash eight, subsection E, where if I'm unable to provide the requisite number of parking stalls, I'm required to put up two thousand dollars per stall that I cannot provide, or such number as determined by the town board from resolution.
But you have to go to the zoning board of appeals for that, right?
That's correct.
So this is just going to be mandated if you can't provide the parking, it's not enough, you're not going to the zoning board of appeals, you're just gonna be paying the fee.
Correct, that's, that's what we wish to do.
Okay.
That's what I wish to do, and I.
No, I, I agree, I think that your situation is that if you're prospectively, if you're building apartments and you cannot provide your parking, you will have to pay, you'll either have to provide it or there'll be a set fee, fee per stall you pay to the parking district, that, not an option to go to the zoning board of appeals, it'll be a set fee.
Well, the only question I have is anytime you have anything in zoning, isn't there automatically a right of an applicant to try to get relief from the zoning board?
I don't know how you could do, I don't know how you could get relief from the zoning board if there's a set fee, the relief is in there.
Yeah, I, I thought that Emery had done a, um, background on that, that, about the fees, how you can waive the fees.
The zoning board should not be waving that.
Cause the fee, the fee is the relief.
That's a different issue, uh, I think that was a question of, you know, where.
That's right.
You have a particular fee that's imposed in the code and somebody comes in and says, "Can you relieve me of that fee?"
And that's how we wanna do it.
Well, you don't wanna be relieved of the fee, you may be relieved of the client through the fee. The fee is the relief.
The only question I have with what you're, what you're talking about is whether you can tell somebody that you don't have a right to go to the zoning board where, you know, basic tenet of zoning is that anytime you wanna, you know, bring an action or, or, or challenge a determination made by the zoning officer, do you have that right? And again, it's, it's gonna be the same thing, cause it's still gonna pay the two thousand dollars.
Is it still one and a half stalls per apartment?
Or whatever the number is that you determine.
Right, it's one and a half stalls per apartment.
Is that high for these kind of apartments, one and a half stalls?
If you got two bedroom apartments?
I have a few, both most studios, but.
I mean, if you wanna look into that, we'll have to do a little bit more research to determine if that's, that's something you can do, that you can totally, you know.
So the reason.
Block somebody's right to utilize the zoning board of appeals for relief.
So we don't wanna get stuck in a environmental impact statement if we make this.
I think, right.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's not environmental.
I, I asked, but I think.
No, it's, it's a type one action.
It's a type one, but, uh, only because the area affected will exceed the twenty-five acre threshold.
How many acres is the downtown area? At, the DC one is fifty-three and a half acres. Oh, okay.
So, we'll do the long environmental assessment formally, circulate the thirty day request for lead agency for town board. I don't see anyone, um, usurping that request and then, you know.
We just have to go through the motions.
Go through the motions, right, file it and we're done.
So what do we do, say, you know, we have several buildings downtown that are strictly business offices and they wanna convert those business offices to apartments? Is there anything in the code that addresses that, and if not, I think there should be?
This is what.
That would require a site plan.
If this applies to residential, if they were converted to residential, then yes, it certainly would.
Yep, absolutely, it would require a site plan and back.
Look, I want Bob to think about that because if the building is existing.
Once the code, once, no, once the code. Right.
And they're not building something new to where they can provide the parking spaces on new construction, then, you know, if the building is existing and it's property line to property line, you know, then how can they create more parking?
Danger use, the change of use, yeah, comes back to you.
Where, where are we?
I would say.
Just think about it, that's all.
I would say Valmont Homes.
Parking. Hey, hold on, I can't only have one conversation, what?
On the narrow issue that would pose, the question of, you know, you have an existing building and then they come in to convert it into, uh, apartments, residential, whatever the case might be. Once this is enacted, it's the law of the land.
Right.
Provided there's no vesting argument, they're, they're bound to adhere to the new law.
There's not gonna be that many apartments.
That's what Valmont Homes said, that was like a seventies case, which is, you know, seminal, it says.
Twenty and thirty was named, switched it to apartments then.
Yeah. Twenty, which one?
Twenty and thirty was named, where they're all business offices now and they were to be converted.
There's no way she switched, that's been very successful, there's no way she's switching to apartments.
Well, not now, but twenty years down the road.
No, but as an example, that's, that's what.
Well, I can't.
Then she could like, take application back to the board.
So let's hear about, Jeff, what were you gonna say?
I, I believe, uh, CDA had been working or issued an RFP for parking study.
Yes.
Um, where were they with that and how does this dovetail into?
If we get the, I spoke to Dawn about it, if we get the award, I think it would be at the end of this year, we probably wouldn't see anything until late spring, it serves really still.
Six, eight weeks it takes for that.
Okay.
That, uh, study to be completed.
So this can run independent of that?
Yes, and that, I, I'm hoping that study gives, gives us a valid, uh, dollar point for a parking space.
I think so.
We should go to this anyway.
The Bowa study talked about it, skirted around it a little bit.
Right.
Um, but I think that this new one will be so specific, it's going to be much more useful than the Bowa. The Bowa is very genetic and-
Yeah, very generic, you know, generic. So,
Well, it'd be nice.
The problem is, we don't, if we don't have the value for the parking stall, do you want to move forward with the legislation now and just keep the value at the two thousand?
Yes, I do, because we know we may have more stuff coming in, so I really will get this off.
There's three more buildings. We had to stand there.
Right, three-pronged approach, not only enforcement.
And not the Rob Munson project, but we heard tale that there's three more buildings. The Gallo project has excited a lot of developers.
Well, we've all heard that, but I think the three-pronged approach of Tim's doing is great, not only through enforcement, but through the pileup program, and then, of course, looking at the whole parking district tax structure. So I think that's all going to work towards getting the parking structure that we're going to need, or flat fields that we need, whatever we need to deal with.
Urban renewal, asphalt.
Well, you know, it's, it's- It'll, it'll have to be a mix.
Believe me, if I get the county, if I get the county to say they don't need all those six hundred spots for the courts, we'd be golden. But right now, that, that obligation killed us for a time around.
All right, so why don't we try this? Why don't, since we know, we have two thousand in the code, why don't we try to start the environmental work on this, amend this code using the two thousand dollar figure, amend the code that if you're not providing resident, if you're doing, converting to residential, or you're building residential, you have to provide one and a half stalls in the parking district proper. And if you don't, it's two thousand dollars per stall.
Okay.
And then when we get the study, you know, I mean, we're never going to be able to charge, you charge, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a stall, you'll, there'll be no development anymore of any sort of residential downtown, which quite frankly, I don't even think two fifty. I think you need more like five hundred units, but now that we have this, we have to start talking about-
No, I don't, I think we're, you know-
Second and Third Street rezoning.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I don't want to, I don't want to put too much more on Main Street.
No, your idea of extending, not necessarily DC one, but extending zoning to the railroad tracks that you talked about a couple of years ago.
And diminish the south side, at least between the-
Right. Well, this is going to diminish the south side once you get that number in there.
Yeah.
But if you, the next step has always been, you know, we wanted to get a couple of good projects on Main Street. Now, I think we have a couple of good projects. Not everybody agrees, but now it's time to look at the south, the north side for townhouses. Because if you're going to be successful like Patrick, you've, you've got to think about rezoning in the north side so some of the developers will come in, buy up a bunch of houses, and, and come in with a, a plan to put townhouses.
I have these discussions all the time with people, all the time. They talk about downtown.
Owner-owned.
Well, you know, that's not necessary.
You almost have to have an incorporated, like, type of mentality to really deal with the downtown, which is not that.
I think with that, what you're talking about, Sean, with the zoning study and, you know, Councilman Wooton's idea from, you know, having the five stories by closer to the tracks and then cascading down to Main Street, I think we need to do an economic analysis, too, to figure out how much affordable housing we need, how much market rate we need, how much ownership we need, so that we get a real mix in order to make the downtown successful.
I think if you dictate in second and third, Union and Maple, that you, those streets, that you're doing townhouse-style housing, you're not getting market, you're, you're getting more market rate. You're not getting affordable housing, because you're not getting funded the way David Gallo and the way, the way Summerwind was, and the way Conifer was. You're not getting that funding.
I don't know about that. I mean, the first affordable housing project that I ever built as on-type construction superintendent was in North Amityville, and it was ownership and it was townhouses. So I think that you're going to-
But that's fine.
Start seeing a lot of that.
Ownership is what we really want.
But you can't regulate ownership.
No, you can't, but that's what we need to push for.
But if you regulate townhouse-style apartments, I think you're, you're not going to get the, I think you're getting more market rate. That, that's my opinion. That's what I've seen in Patrick. I mean, Copper Beach, I think, did start as an affordable housing, but most of their townhouses are market-rate townhouses. That's how they were built. And that's, you need that. No, you need the market-rate housing because you have, if, downtown needs five hundred apartments or houses like Patrick. Patrick has seven hundred and seventy, I think, eight hundred.
They also have more, um,
It's a bigger area, but if you're going to have a successful Main Street with foot traffic and everything else, you have to have-
Yeah, but that's to pay for, no more than five hundred.
But that's only on Main Street. But if you, but my point is, I think you need that five hundred.
Yeah, but not, well, I'd-
No, you can, that's my point, is you could move it north to the tracks, and I think that's, but that's not part of this, because that's a much bigger study. That's for a future town board to tackle.
It's just nicer to them.
Let's, let's start this. Let's get the, uh-
It changes the whole town, you know, it's, 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 it's what has to happen.
Right.
It's growing pains. A lot of people don't, but it's, it's-
I've said-
It's setting up for the future.
I've said for, for a long time, we have followed Patrick since we've been, since Jody and I have been in office, we've been following Patrick's model.
They should have been following us, but we won't.
Patrick has been way, we're about five years behind Patrick. I've always said that, and-
Because we didn't take over the city, that's why. Cardinelli killed that way back when.
Well, when you, when you look at what Pontieri did, and when you look at Patrick, and you look at what Cardinelli did, they both got elected in not the same year, but the same basically year. They both started in two thousand four.
Remember when I have to kill the town, take it over after you and I have killed it?
When, and Patrick stole, was stealing businesses from us, so, you know, we're following that model. That model works. Anybody that's in the downtown revitalization business not following Paul Pontieri is foolish, living Southampton. But whatever, we won't say.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Because that Renaissance is really going over there, isn't it? I don't mean the group, I just mean.
Look at, look at all this.
Hey.
Yeah.
All these brains at this time.
So what's your, what's your timeframe and what's your timeframe?
You can tell us, I mean, you want to go forward with this.
Well, you got to do the secret first.
I, I need to have a fairly accurate draft of, of the proposed code change.
Okay.
Uh, similar to what you would release for public hearing. And then I can attach the, to the environmental assessment form, circulate that out for comment to the involved agencies, together with an area map of what's going to be affected here.
All right, so you two work on the code provision circulated to the board. We'll give you the high five,
Okay.
and then you can start working on that. Okay, all right, good.
Good.
The next step.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, what else do we have today?
Like, you got nothing else to do.
Rental, oh, listen, Eric, the longer you stay, the more work we're going to get.
Yes, Sean's got you drafted.
You've got to write an RFP.
He's full of zip. He likes work.
Here, you like this. This is all for you. That's the RFP, people, well, not people, but. All right, what's a rental law public information?
All right, well, Jill asked me to put together a handout that could be sort of supplied to the public and, you know, maybe put on the television station, put on the website.
Do you have any for the press?
Uh, yeah.
No sense, Leonard, you go back with my other. Just go back to my other.
How you doing?
Who's going back to my?
All right. So this was actually born out of our civic association meeting. Didn't you go to one of the civic organ, one of the homeowners associations?
I did. Brief speech.
Brief speech.
Okay. Yes.
And Sound Park Heights or something.
Yeah.
So this is already in our code. It's just a summary.
Yes, this is, this is for any, you know, property owner that wants to rent their house.
Yep.
Uh, it's just, it goes through and summarizes the rental permit process.
Yep.
Uh, what you need to do, penalties for not doing what you need to do are, has the fees on there, has some distinction, put in some examples, you know, if, if you have a dwelling that is for two, two people, or two families, sorry.
Fifteen days in jail.
Yeah, that's, that's in the code.
There was somebody that got put in jail, I don't remember what town, town, I saw it news day, there was somebody put in jail for, um, in Southampton, I think, for violating the rental code and continuing to violate it. So this, this actually was what, the genesis of this originally was in the civic association's meeting, Sound Park, I guess specifically with Sound Park, they were worried about people come in and doing transient rentals. So we wanted to have something to give to the civic association, so when they have their annual meeting, they can hand it out and say, listen, for those owners that want to do transient rentals, here you go, this is what you have to comply with. Did you want to see that? So that, we're going to make this available to anybody that wants it.
Yeah, no, this is great, and I think it's a great idea to do, to just summarize it and let people know what their responsibility is. And you can give it out to them when they ask for a rental permit application. Also, some things that Dawn and I were working on before she shifted from the town attorney's office over to the CDA were that any rental permit that expires for more than thirty days, they'll pay double the fee.
Okay.
So that people will come in and actually take out their rental permits when they're due, rather than letting them lapse for six months.
That would be a code revision that needs to be worked on.
That would be a code revision, or-
I'm not double.
Why? There's no reason why they shouldn't be able to renew their rental permit on time.
I'll tell you later, yes, I'm not double, that double the fee's a little-
And then we were also talking about parking requirements, how there would be no parking permitted on the front lawns.
Seems reasonable.
I think that's in our code.
What's this note here that I can't?
No, it's not in our code.
It says, it's not acceptable on the main floor and continue residing in the basement. Bet you can reside on the second floor?
Well, no, it, no, you can't. It's, it's intended to just sort of highlight for individuals that when you rent your house, you're renting the entire house. You're not, you're not renting the basement or the second floor or the main floor.
It's not a three-family house or a two-family house.
And, you know, continuing to have like a room for yourself in the basement. You can't do that. You're renting the entire dwelling. Um, and so when you go through the permit procedure, you can't limit the floor plan that you supply us with by saying, well, I'm just renting out this, this piece, you know.
So Bob was just telling him a room.
He can't either, it's very, it's pretty discreet.
So is it legal for you to rent out a room in my house, if I was to say?
Correct, correct.
Did he actually catch that?
He did.
He caught it. What is, I'm asking questions, people probably want to know.
And did you see that man catch a fly practically with his eyes closed?
Who did?
Eric Howard. Yeah, he caught a fly with his eye.
It was in his hair, and he went like this.
And he went like that. I knew you should be the next town supervisor.
See, that's the town supervisor.
Rotating cuff doesn't work. I can't do that.
And, and he didn't ever lose eye contact.
Okay, wait a minute, how many pull-ups can we do?
All right, I'll just read this then. I want to ask some questions.
Really? I can do one. Laura, how many pull-ups can you do? Not, like, oh, you ought to at least be able to do one, too.
When I was in elementary school, I could only do the flexed arm hang.
Yeah.
So that, so that motivated me to do pull-ups.
So this is the pull-up?
Yeah, the flexed arm hang was on the Presidential Fitness Award, and all you had to do was hang it there for a certain number of seconds.
Yeah, I did that, too.
Jim, did you have something serious to talk about?
No, I was just saying, I mean, there, I know a lot of people that rent out, I mean, they live there.
Then that's an accessory apartment, not a rental permit.
Right.
Thank you, Eric. And they rent the room. Not, not accessory apartment with a separate stall and all that stuff. They rent the room in their house.
Well,
That's illegal.
That's illegal, unless, unless they have-
Because people ask me that. I don't think, I don't think it's legal.
No.
To rent out a room, even if you have a shared space.
I mean, unless you-
That's a boarding house.
Unless you take the position that you operate as a single-family unit.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, I have to give my wife her money back, because she's been paying me for rent.
Oh, these are too close? Are you, why does Eric need to move closer?
He's speaking too softly.
Is the microphone not picking you up?
Oh, I apologize.
I guess I'm going to tell Rebecca.
We have to start over.
All right, so this is great. Let's get this out there, give it, as Jody said, when they have the code enforcement applications come in, that should, that should go out as part of the package, and, and we'll put it on the website and make sure it's available to, um, we'll give it to the civics for the next roundtable.
Okay.
Good.
Great, thanks, Eric.
Yep.
This is really good.
I'm why with you.
Yeah, I more like it.
I think I see it.
I knew he'd go, because the look on his face when he did it was like,
Is it?
Oh, my God, but I do.
You, you did grab it and throw it down, but it's ten-footed, it's over there.
Yeah, I did. I hope that, I'm going to be prepared to watch this show.
Just give it a whack on your way out.
You'll have the PETA people down here, don't do that.
We have, um, we just need to go.
See you later.
Bye.
All right. You ready?
No.
Resolution one.
Oh, hang on, homie.
Okay.
We just talked about this. Okay, I'm up. You up?
Yep.
Um, authorizes the community development department to apply for a Main Street, I'm sorry, revitalization grant from PSENG to constru, in conjunction with the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association. This is for the Main Street revitalization. Uh, we talked about this.
This is for the Festival of Lights, an art and park event on the shoulder season. I don't know what the shoulder season is, but that's-
This is, um, yeah, we talked about this. This is sort of a takeoff of something else.
Yeah, it's a gradual park, yeah, I know.
Yeah. We good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, two, awards bid for collection and recycling of electronic waste.
E-waste, very good.
Electronic recyclers international of Massachusetts. Okay. Good, that's the bid.
We've got to always put it out on the side of the road.
Yeah, and that's the way it's going to happen.
I think there's a way that you can put the resolution in there, a separate fold for the attachment.
All right, three, authorizes town clerk to pub, uh, to post and publish attached notice to bidders for the removal of household hazardous waste. Oh, that's a shame, because the other guy was so good. Hopefully he wins the bid again. It really looked good. Uh, dub, of resolution four, appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator two A.
Uh, he's provisional, how does he pass the test? Is that what it is? Good.
We good?
Yep.
Don't know anything about it.
The same with Tom Gallow.
You can go tonight if you want. Two, I'm, I paid for tickets and they have the whole table. Five, Eddie Bear. Five, appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator two A.
Same thing.
Is that the same guy?
No, Tom Gallow, Tom Gallow and Brian Zabelski, they both passed their test.
Six, appoints a part-time maintenance mechanic to the seniors program.
Uh, he is Alan Kavash.
Kavash. Seven, accepts retirement of building inspector, Richard Podles. A lot of people are going to be upset.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry to see him go.
He's my neighbor.
Eight, appoints a part-time maintenance mechanic one to the senior program.
Might quick.
Nine, authorizes supervisor to execute a municipal cooperation agreement between the town of Riverhead and the Riverhead Fire District for sand and salt services. We do this every year.
Yeah.
Ten, authorizes highway superintendent to execute professional services agreement and vehicle tracking solutions for automated vehicle location monitoring for the town or event highway department. That's GPS system.
Yeah, Big Brother watching. Yeah, I think he's, it's just a renewal, right? He has a contract to it.
Yeah, it's a renewal. Eleven, authorizes the supervisor to execute agreement with the Riverhead Soccer Club for training and referee services for town of Riverhead Police Athletic League Girls and Boys Soccer Program for the two thousand seventeen calendar year. This is so that they can pay the individuals and we're not writing thirty-dollar checks to kids.
I like it.
Twelve, awards bid for chemicals for town of Riverhead Sewer District. Thirteen, authorizes the publishing post advertising for Dowflake Extra Calcium Chloride or Equal for the town of Riverhead. Hey Larry, these two resolutions, twelve and thirteen, we should be looking with that county shared services thing to see whether we can get any of these things on their competitive bid. It's probably going nowhere. Fourteen, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law for the amendment of chapter two forty-five entitled Littering and Graffiti of the Riverhead Town Code definitions.
Oh, they want to, they want to add poo poo.
That waste is littering?
I don't, I, I was going to ask you the same thing.
Who did this?
I don't know. Emery sent it to me. I didn't, I assumed one of you asked for it.
Did one of us ask for this?
I didn't ask for it.
I didn't, but I don't necessarily disagree with it.
I don't really-
I don't, I don't know where it came out.
I don't know, I mean, isn't there laws already that they have to pick up, that they can write it by?
It could come out from Bridge Downs, too.
Sure there is.
No, there's one law saying you have to clean up after your dog.
Well, I think, are you sure it's on the fifty-eight chapter?
I don't think so. I've never seen it.
Okay.
Fifteen, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a public notice of hearing to consider a local law for the amendment of chapter two sixty-three entitled Rental Dwelling Units of Riverhead Town Code. If all occupancy required. What is this?
Well, this is the one that, um, so that we could serve the management company if there was, if the owner lived out of state.
Right.
Didn't we talk about this a long time ago?
Yep, I think we're adopting it, because we went to public hearing on it, right?
Yes, this was long before. I love looking around here.
Well, we went to public hearing on it.
All right, I, we better check that, because we talked about it a long time ago. Sixteen, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association regarding two thousand eighteen calendar year events and services.
Do we have a list of those events?
It should be an exhibit.
There's an agreement.
Oh, here they are, okay.
There's the budget. The budget, um, exhibit and then the event exhibit. I don't see any events exhibit, I just have the budget.
Yeah, this is what they presented to us.
Oh, there it is. So it has the events on there, on the budget.
Yeah, there is a separate one, but it has it on there. Good?
Yep.
Seventeen, authorizes legal action against the owners, tenants, occupants and mortgagee of premises known as seven sixteen-nine Harrison Avenue, Riverhead.
Yippee.
We talked about this.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm going back to bid. Now, I know they have these alive on twenty-fives now, they, they have to report back to the town, right, or like?
Yeah, so that's self-funded?
I'm sure it's more than self-funded.
No, I'm saying it doesn't show up in the budget, that you're, doesn't show up in the budget that you're approving, because-
I understand that, but they still have to make a financial report back to the town.
We audit them.
We still do audits of their accounts.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, that's all.
Yes, we audit that account.
All right.
Seventeen, we did that, seven sixteen on Harrison.
Just out of curiosity, Jim, are you asking that because they are collecting fees from the booths that are alive on twenty-five and?
Well, we are the bid, and I'd like to know, I'd like to have a report of their financial.
They gave it, he gave it to you last time he was here.
Right, I, I've got three scottles, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I have, I have a copy of it.
Okay.
Oh, Bill does, Bill, every year, at the close of the year, they actually do a financial audit of.
But he gave us the budget that they just finished from this year, so you can see.
Well, I see the budget, I appreciate what they're doing for next year.
No, I'm saying there's a financial breakdown, shows you how much they expect.
I wanna see what they took in this year and what they want. Okay, good.
Yes, Bill, but I'm saying Bill does like an ABZ type audit every year. I don't know where they are, I think Ray Skelzy does it. Seventeen, eighteen. Adops a local law to men chapter three oh one entitled zoning and land development of the town of Riverhead.
Oh, good, yeah, this is at the.
Alright.
Yeah, you did this, right?
It's amazing, because a lot of the windows being dressed right now are similar to what the zoning that was proposed for storefronts.
This is forcing people to put the stick on the fence, I guess.
Nineteen, authorizes the supervisor to execute stipulation of settlement with Civil Service Employees Association, Inc., local one thousand, AFSCME, AFLCIO, Riverhead Union of Suffolk, local eighty-five, CSCA. That was the minibus.
Taking the big bus away from it.
Authorizes twenty, settlement of lawsuit, Aram and the Sates, ugh.
That's right.
That's a big one.
That bothers me.
Yeah, me too, but.
Yeah, we lost, neither.
Twenty-one, authorizes town clerk to post and publish the attached notice of two bidders for the removal, and there's a duplicate of hazardous waste, that's a duplicate of the one in the very beginning.
Okay.
Twenty-two, order establishing lateral water main extension for the Pecan Care Research Recovery and Rehabilitation Center, went to public hearing on that last time. Plus, and that's it, is there another one?
So this is, I need three signatures on that, and then Lisa just brought this, I don't have enough copies.
This is for us to.
For the chief cannon, that kind of.
This is for us to, so I can sign the letter for that multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan that will require a twenty-five percent match, but it could be matched by in-kind services of the employees.
You want this, one of them?
That's just so you can see it, but I didn't wanna sign it until such time as you guys saw it, I mean, you guys, we'll pass a resolution. Oh, there was a different, separate one of them?
Yeah, there was one that had ten percent for the water department, so I think I'm.
Oh, yeah, no, that, yeah, no, that's.
Oh. Alright, I just need the one back that's signed, signed. Give that one to. I'm gonna give you this one.
Well, then I'm sure. No, you can't have it.
There's only one here, but, alright. And you can keep that once Jim gets it. Alright, this one, awards bid for water district roof replacement. This was, the bid is that forty, fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we're awarding it to Morgue Consultating, Consulting Corporation, nineteen Old Dock Road, yeah, how many bidders did we get?
Oh, look at the, look at the various.
What, are they building a new house?
That's what I'm saying, I couldn't believe the amount of money.
Hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
Fifty-one thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-two thousand to replace the roof.
Alright, well, we're on the water district.
From fifty-one to a hundred and thirty-two.
Eric, this is the resolution, so that's gonna go in the package.
Very busy and just throwing in a very. Fifty-one thou, well, it's supposed to be eighteen thousand for my little house, so I can see that.
And that roof's in pretty bad shape. So this'll be in the package, you wanna see this, Jimmy, the award of it?
Yes, I do.
And then I'm gonna give that to you.
Thank you.
You're gonna take it to a meeting.
Oh, we have the one.
I take it to my office.
We have it on our emails.
Do we have that one in our, oh, okay, let's see.
We share it, I have it.
Take it to my office, it's public information.
My aunt's office is very good about sending everything right away. Yes, she's on our emails. She's.
We try.
Alright, so getting an motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel. Second.
Motion, second.
All in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions.
You gotta.
Motion carries.
I'll get you that part, I'll have it.
I don't remember, I don't think I did that one.
Oh, we got it, we got it.
No, I didn't, I don't know if I did that in the budget.
Larry, we want better music, much better music. Oh, CCR or some platinum or something. Yeah, right.